Just gonna wait till quarter passed, we'll start at an even number.
Okay, Jordan, let's um, let's get going. Good morning, it is ten fifteen AM. And I'd like to call the special county council count, special county council meeting of October twenty second to order. We acknowledge that Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Is someone willing to make that motion? Counselor Anderson, any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero, and motion is adopted. First item of business is citizen budget number three point one. I'm not sure from administration who's gonna lead that, but is there a motion forthcoming? Counselor Kapitanic has made a motion that council receives results from the citizen budget as information. Is there any discussion? Counselor Holland.
Thank you very much. I'm sure appreciate the the report that we have here today. A little disappointing, we hope to just probably see more engagement from from people coming in, but I'm so glad to see that we had people coming in. So that's also a huge positive. Appreciate the the overall, I guess, conclusion more than anything is is pretty much what I see a little bit more leaning towards status quo for this budget. So that's extremely helpful, and I appreciate seeing these surveys, and I hope that we continue to do more of them, which will engage more public as they know that they're available and they need to go. So I appreciate all the effort and work that's gone into this. Thank you so much.
Other comments? Counselor Anderson?
Um, in our twenty twenty four budget, we budgeted eleven thousand dollars for the budget engagement. How much was spent on this budget engagement survey?
It was around seven thousand.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion that county that council receives results from the citizen budget as information, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and zero, and the motion is adopted. We are moving on to item number three point two, community hall assistance grant. So administration has a recommendation, is there anyone willing to move the motion, Counselor Kapitanic? Counselor Kapitanic has moved. Discussion on the item, Counselor Holland, or do you want to open it and then?
I will open just with a confirming question to administration that the budget line for twenty twenty five is reasonable and sufficient. For sure.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we do think it's reasonable and sufficient.
Excellent, thank you.
Good, Counselor Holland, comments?
No, thank you, I appreciate that.
Counselor Anders?
Thank you. There, I believe the names are Athabasca District Agricultural Society and Boyle and District Agricultural Society. So we'll have to amend that for the policy there. But I also just want to say I was kind of caught off guard by the as a result when distributing funds to each applicant, allocations were reduced to stay within the budget of ninety two five. I just thought, I don't remember that coming to council, because I think this council probably would have found ten thousand dollars somewhere to support those community halls, just would have been an easy win for us, so. Can you, through the chair to administration, can you tell us which community halls seen a reduction in their payments this year?
Uh, Mr. Chair, members of council, we agree with you, Counselor Anderson, we, upon looking at this, the the allocations, uh, we also had the same type of questions, and I think in defense of staff, is the policy set to a maximum of fifty percent, so they follow that policy to a maximum. Each, I have the a copy of last year's allocations and every association or organization took a little bit of a hit, some some less than uh, one percent, some up to fifteen percent, it just to just to bring it down. So they, I think staff did their best to make sure that it was fair and consistent with all of the organizations.
Does that satisfy your question? Do you have a phone?
No, I may consider making a motion after this motion is.
Counselor Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, and I apologize, I didn't have my notes handy at the time when you asked the first time. Um, is it possible to have a copy of the comparison to the what the other halls have received? Are we able to obtain that information as well?
Through the chair to members of council, yes, I can certainly supply that information.
Excellent, thank you. And just a couple more things, as I may, I just wanted to float, floated around a little bit with council to see how they felt. Um, if we would be um, in the neighborhood to contact the town and and Boyle for a letter of request of contributions towards the egg societies, being that you know, we do a lot of funding back and forth, that maybe they might be interested in helping out with that as well. So it's just something I've thought I'd throw out there to see what people thought. Um, there was a particular, for example, I do remember back in twenty sixteen, our egg society, the Agriplex was an amazing, did an amazing job for evacuees, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just county employees that are county employees, county residents that are benefiting, but it is from province wide almost, whenever we need to call on people into action and they jumped, and it's pretty amazing. So I'm really supportive of that as well. Um, the only concern I do have with the policy on page thirty are the words, uh, the hall services must be accessible to the residents of Athabasca County. That kind of opens up a whole other, um, for me, a whole other realm of different possible, uh, hall services such as senior centers within Athabasca, Athabasca, et cetera. So I'm wondering about the wording, which originally when this first came forward, would be more beneficial to say with the exception of the Athabasca District, uh, Athabaskan District Agriplex, the property must be within the Athabasca County boundary and form part of the Athabasca County assessment role. Um, I think that that would save us a little bit from having a whole pile of inundated, you know, requests. And again, as you mentioned, on page thirty one, the Agriplex Hall should be named Athabaskan District Agriplex. Um, and I'm not sure Boyle is accurate in this listing. Okay, so we just have a few few corrections to make, but that's what I would suggest.
What's the intention of counts? Because I share the same concern that the way the policy is worded, this to me looks like the thin edge of the wedge. Uh, we fund seniors halls in Rochester and in Water River that are used by county residents, there are seniors halls in Boyle and Athabasca in the, and well, Collins in. Oh, yeah, but that's, that's on here already, but um, that it's the thin edge of the wedge, and maybe we want to expand funding to include funding for those other facilities, or maybe we don't, but we're, to me, we're straying a long way when we start funding a lot of buildings inside a different municipality. And the egg society, I think there's an argument that maybe differentiates it from the others, that it's principally membered by county residents, but so I'm not thrilled with the wording. Is that what I had to say? Um, the other, yeah, if it's on that subject, and then maybe we'll come back, I had another comment. So what's the thought, Counselor Kapitanic? Okay, so let's, Counselor Holland is gonna, are you prepared to move an amendment to change the language to say with the exception of the well, it needs to be unanimous, so is there any objection to changing that to read with the exception of the Athabaskan District Agricultural Society, the property must be within Athabasca County boundary, et cetera? Okay, there's no objections to that, Salia, can we amend the original motion to read with that change of wording? Or you can do it as an amendment and just record the amendment as receiving unanimous consent, by the way. That might be clearer. The, um, Counselor Gerlach.
I was just wondering whether there would be any consideration, when you look at the communities like Athabasca, for example, the facilities in there are fifty percent supported by the town and fifty percent supported by the county in most respects. And the same in Boyle, our contributions to both those municipalities are very significant. When you get out into the county, there is only support from one side. They're sitting there with fifty percent of the support that most other communities have. And with the changing in demographics, I I can recall when I was on council in the nineties, our population was over ten thousand. Now it was, now it was six or sixty nine or somewhere in that that area, thirty percent reduction. And there are fewer and fewer people, the old established families from these communities are kind of gone now, the to to a very large extent, and there's a lot of people coming in that really aren't fitting into the community, like, there's people that have moved into a house, they've been there two years, and I don't even know what they look like, I've never seen them. That type of thing, and so I think the responsibility is falling on fewer and fewer shoulders, and the ability to 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 make create any funds to support things in the in the community are getting more and more difficult all the time. And I think that we should possibly look at something like a community enhancement grant that goes to the communities. Um, where perhaps they get grants and they look after their own grass mowing, they look after, so I'm just gonna bring us back to the specific topic in front of us, which is the community hall assistance grant?
Yeah, well, I'm kind of like Donald Trump, I just wander all over the place. Um, but I just wanted to bring that up as, because it is connected to that, and uh, just as a thought. Okay, take it away.
So something we want to come back to it, um, inside the budget somewhere, then, Councilman? The other question that I had before, um, when I so when I read part five of the policy, does that mean a hall like, so part five of the policy says they must have gas, I think maybe we should, you know, gas when connected, because some facilities don't necessarily have a hookup, right? If there's no meter, we can't not help them because they don't have a gas meter. Or they use electricity. Um, so I think we have to be cautious about the spirit of what we're doing, so gas slash propane when connected or but then in 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 that, does that part five mean that the Amber Valley Hall didn't get paid last year? Because it was my understanding from the presentation that they disconnected and and put the building into cold storage over the winter because the boiler wasn't working.
Mr. Chair and members of council, last year Amber Valley did not even apply.
Just to confirm, they managed heat and keeping that building from freezing up because of the museum as well.
Okay. Are there any further comments? So the question is on the adoption of the motion to approve the addition of Athabasca and District Agricultural Society and the Boyle and District Agricultural Society to schedule A of policy seventy six twenty five Community Hall Assistance Grant, and further to approve policy seventy six twenty five as amended. And the amendment is a change to the definition of community hall, which reads with the exception of the Athabaskan District Agricultural Society, the property must be within Athabasca County boundary and form part of the Athabasca County assessment role. Counselor Holland?
Um, I don't know about naming the society per se, other, but mentioning Athabaskan District Agriplex. So the building remains, whether if the society should change the name, the buildings should be the one that we're looking at, not necessarily the society, because the rest of the community halls are listed as a hall. We should be listing this not as a society, but as the actual Agriplex, in my opinion.
So with the exception of the Athabasca Agriplex? Is that what its actual name is? With the exception of the Athabasca and District Agriplex? Does everybody understand what we're voting on, or do you want me to repeat it? On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is seven and zero, and the motion is adopted. We are at item three point three, which is the twenty twenty five operating and capital budgets, this is the second, uh, second look at these. Um, I think we can, I'll give the floor to administration to go over the discussion report, and then once we get into the actual budget, we can look at the the budget line, but really flip to the notes, pages, and back and forth to to deal with each one on an individual basis. CIO Beck or Director Amblay, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council, uh, we've outlined the questions that came up at the last budget meeting, and the answers are before you, and I don't know if you want me to go line by line, or if you have any specific questions that you'd like to highlight, and hopefully we can answer that questions for you today.
I think I've always taken the view that council should have read this before the meeting, so if you have questions about what you've read, this is the moment on these two pages. We're on page thirty two and thirty three. Uh, Counselor Anderson?
There's a comment on here about the library board and the salary cost related to these rules have been removed from the draft operating budget. Are we expecting those discussions to be complete in twenty twenty five, or is that something that's gonna be longer term? Like, I'm just wondering if we should include some funds in there.
Director Amblay, do you want to address that?
Uh, Mr. Chair and members of council, upon speaking, we had a couple of meetings with the library grant program of through Alberta Municipal Affairs, and what we've learned is that library library staff should be reporting directly to a board and not to a municipality. We can provide grant funding, which we already do, but that's why we withdrew those dollars from the budget is because they they are uh, not to be employed by the municipality.
So the problem we were trying to solve by doing that now just kind of gets shifted for the board to create that solution?
Yes, and Mr. Chair and members of council, we are continuing discussions with the library grant program and uh, seeking their guidance and working with the chair going forward.
Good. Um, if we can pause for one second, I I realize that I might have jumped ahead too quickly, Counselor Holland. Do you want to make a motion about letters related to going to the town and village under item three point two?
Thank you, I appreciate that, I think that would be great, um, to see if they would be interested.
If there's no objection, we're gonna table Counselor Holland's gonna move to table three point three till we revert back to three point two for a second. Any objections to that? Okay, we're good. Counselor Holland, you wanted to make a motion to send letters to the town and village to see if they, how do you want to word that?
I didn't write that wording down, but to send a letter of request for support, uh, financial support, I guess you could say, for the both the, um, the village, pardon me, yeah, the Boyle Agriplex as well as the, uh, Athabasca Agriplex. And I don't really know how to put the rest of it, being that we offer our assistance. We're, I don't know if they need to, is put that in.
Some, Councilmen, you want to offer some suggestions on wording there?
On the wording, not not really, but I I don't know. I agree with the Athabasca multiplex or Agriplex.
We'll split the question, I think I'm gonna ask to split it, because I think they're they're two different things.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, we'll split the question.
So we're we'll, I think Counselor Holland is looking for is to direct administration to send a letter to the town and the village re- um, asking for them to consider financial support of the um, respective agricultural societies in their boundaries or near them. Is that fair? Does that capture your, Ms. Blair, how are you doing in terms of writing that down? I've said it three different ways, I mean, come on. So the motion is to request, to make, to direct administration to, um, send a letter to the town of Athabasca uh, proposing or asking for their support, uh, financial support of the Athabaskan District Agricultural Society, and to send a letter to the village of Boyle. And to send a letter to the Village of Boyle requesting their support of the Boyle and District Agricultural Society. And we're gonna split the question because it's two distinct propositions, Councilor Holland.
Do we need to offer a suggestion in what? How much support we're requesting, I imagine that'll be a question that will come back when we send those letters.
Or do you want to leave it to them? That's up to you.
Okay.
That it's up to you to decide, I mean, we can, I'm sure the Crafty Mine uh, letter writing team here can tell them what we do and say. What would you like to see?
How we share. Yeah, how much we share.
I think administration has heard that, uh, they just, we want to communicate what we do, so. Because they're distinct, I'm asking to split the question, is there any other discussion on this, Councilor Anderson?
Well, just to clarify, is, are these letters to inform our municipal partners of what we've decided to do and?
And request their support?
Request that they match that, or is it just a blanket we? Want you to do this, because to me, those are different requests.
Councilor Capitaine?
Um, just an idea, as we have been discussing, um. I mean, the committees that are just with our two partners, but separately, maybe letter that um. Lets them know that we would like to have this as a topic of discussion, or or we encourage them to put some thought into this for our next, the next time we get together. I don't know, something like that, because we like creating these new committees, right?
Let's just ask them to, well.
Maybe just ask them.
With your microphone.
I think I would be opposed to this motion. Um, I don't think it's a tit for tat. Uh, thing, the county has access to. To assessments that that the town and village don't have, uh, that are fairly substantial. And I think the idea is that we're supporting. Uh, functions in inside the town and village, uh, both that the county residents use and. And I, I think it would just be an urgent as opposed, I don't, I think the, the. Monetary compensation would be minimal and irritation that it would create wouldn't be worth it. So, at any rate. I would not support.
I would be personally in favor of the emotion that's more open to address some of the comments that have been made to let them decide what they feel is able, they're able to support. So perhaps the support they can provide is something different than cash, because we know. That that's not available, but maybe it's snow clearing, or maybe it's some grass cutting or something different, but it's more. Hey, here's what we're doing, maybe you should consider something too, and it's, again, we have no authority or jurisdiction there except to try to use some. Our persuasive influence to challenge our neighbors to do better. So any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, and I'm gonna say on the Village of Boyle one, I'm opposed entirely because it's outside the village. Um, further discussion, Councilor Holland, do you want to wrap up with a comment?
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
So the um. Ms. Blair, can you read what you've typed? Please? Just so that I say the same thing.
Moved by Councilor Holland to direct administration to send a letter to the town of Athabasca requesting their financial support. Of the Athabasca and District Agricultural Society.
Kate, we'll stop there. So on the question of that, adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed? The count is uh, seven and one, the motion is adopted and carrying on, Ms. Blair?
Moved by Councilor Holland to direct administration to send a letter to the Village of Boyle requesting their financial support to the Boyle and District Agricultural Society.
And the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed? Uh. So it's three and um, three and five, the uh, the motion is lost. And Councilor Anderson, had you wanted to make any other additional motions on that, okay, with apologies for that, that miss, I had an open. Overlooked it, so back to the item three point three, um, I appreciate your tolerance on that uh. Diversion. Are there other questions regarding page thirty two and thirty three? For administration? Councilor Holland, sorry, pleasures.
Thank you, um, page thirty two, road construction and maintenance, um, I'm seeing again uh, for the second year in a row that we don't have a budget for road construction. And just wondering how that impacts uh, what we're currently doing to try and maintain and keep our roads up to snuff. I realize, of course, bridges are are there as well, but just wondering why we can't do it simultaneously. I'm just wondering what the impacts will be by not having a second year road construction.
Uh, CEO or Director Ambley?
Mister Chair and Members of Council, uh, one of the reasons I think was we have many carryover projects as well, and we want to make sure it's manageable uh, to have any road construction, but we are continuing with maintenance. And of course, yes, the bridge uh, construction will will also come forward.
Also, page thirty four in this kind of section to see if there's any in the admin report, so if you have questions on that, this is also the time, Councilor Holland, the floor remains yours.
On page, okay, from page thirty two to thirty four, correct?
Yeah, that's that's kind of the same report, let's just get them all.
Um, I guess then for the road construction and maintenance portion, would this be an opportunity for um? Making sure that, I guess, for the gravel maintenance, the gravel program that we have, um, does that encompass? Um, outside the program for any type of gravel loss that we're experiencing, um, and that kind of thing. Do we have enough there to make sure that we are replacing the gravel loss that we have experienced this year?
Admin, is there someone?
Chairman, I think I can answer this, um. I think the um, intent was to suspend the the big road construction, all other programs are intact, including the gravel source and spot graveling. Uh, so those programs are intact as they were before. It was really the major road construction that I think Director Whaley. Informed council that should like to tap the brakes on until we got a couple of other things done, including uh, landfill reclamation and gravel pit reclamation, um. And even to answer your question a bit further, there's still shoulder pulls included, which is a. Minor road construction, so there's still construction, it's not complete road rebuilds unless uh, something comes forward for a special motion of council.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
If I may, um, let's see, what we got here, number five, the glaring water supply, um. I would really like to put a motion forward on bringing that water rate bylaw uh, back to council for further discussion. Um, I probably have spent more time on this than than I care to admit. I did not see the answers in the information that we were received, what we had received. Uh, why this was applied several years ago, how it affects the water rates and a business case for a subsidy. From my understanding, for the levy itself, um, I'm just seeing a total. Administrative almost nightmare, a lack of transparency, where we have a levy that was instituted in two thousand eight. Uh, we installed more piping and water and et cetera, expanded the system, they didn't get a levy. So now we provide a credit so that we can cancel out the levy. To Colton, which then makes our water rate bylaw, which we've been saying we're gonna have the same rate right across the board. That doesn't apply to the water rate bylaw, which then tells me can be challenged the bylaw, so I'm I'm just basically looking at this going. Number one, the costs that uh, we have per cube, which is not part of this, but we'll we'll touch that a little later. Um, but that definitely needs to be addressed, but this levy, um. How would it impact? The Colton residents, should that levy be discontinued altogether? And I'm curious, because I still haven't been able to find it, when did the? Zeroing out of the levy start, what year did that start in? Because I've been going through water rate bylaws, I've been looking through everything, going through the historical, going through minutes. Killing myself trying to figure this out, and I'm frustrated because I can't find that information, so I'm curious as to when this. Levy zeroing out thing started, how quickly after two thousand eight did that begin, did it start twenty twelve, et cetera, et cetera? So I'm, I just don't have enough information here, other than that that levy is creating a nightmare. Um, and it needs to go, if we're zeroing it out, why do we have it?
I'm wondering if this is a subject that would be better handled through Committee the Whole as its own. Lengthier discussion? Because you you bring up a number of pieces that I, I mean, we'll offer the floor to the CIO, but I I would propose that. This is something we should take to the Committee the Whole for a a conversation.
Mister Chairman, that's exactly what um, I was gonna suggest is if. If it please council to pass a motion, we're happy to bring back a report and some background information. Um, because we already owe council a report on the the delegation that you received uh, from uh, uh. Business owner in grassland who wanted information about his utility rates, so we had already begun research on that. So it's kind of related, so we're happy to bring ahead a report that kind of addresses both issues at once, Mister Chairman.
So Councilor Holland, would you be um? Interested in making a motion to direct administration to bring a discussion item to committee the whole regarding water rates and the. Uh, levy? In Colton?
Absolutely, um, and in the fact of the water rates that um, we're looking at what our actual costs are in the prior year, prior.
Let's 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 move that discussion to that place then, so what's what's the language that you would like? To direct administration to bring a discussion item to committee the whole regarding water rates?
Regarding water rates and the uh, Colton uh, water level levy, do you need the bylaw number for that?
Regarding water rates and the um, local improvement levy in Colton. So Councilor Holland has made a motion to direct administration to bring a discussion item to committee the whole regarding water rates and the local improvement levy in Colton. Any further discussion? Councilor Capitaine? Oh, if you're ready for the question on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is seven and one, and the motion is adopted. Are there other questions, um? Yep, Councilor Capitaine?
Uh, forgive me if I didn't notice this before, um, but I am seeing.
So are we, so we're still right now on pages thirty two, thirty three?
Never mind. I'm way ahead of you.
So then we're gonna work through the rest page at a time, just.
But also it's still tiny, and I'm like, ah, okay, sorry.
Councilor, is there anyone else that has additional questions on thirty two or thirty three, or can we move a move forward and get right into the budget? Let's move along, um. The page thirty six, of course, is the summaries of all the other reports wrapping up into there, I don't think there's a lot there, other than I did notice. We made an amendment on the uh, fire department capital purchases reserved to five hundred thousand, but it didn't carry forward into future years, and so I. Just wanted to confirm with council, was that the intent to bump for one year and drop back, or was the intent to bump up and carry on, which is how I understood it? Councilor Chamsak?
I'd like to see it carry forward.
Is there any objection to seeing that five hundred carry forward as a flat rate into the future? Director Ambley or Mister M Taz, you can note that?
Mister Chair.
Moving on to the legislative budget, that's on page thirty seven, Councilor Holland.
Sorry, thank you, um, the reserve transfers um, that we're looking at on on page thirty six. Do you want to discuss these as we get to that budget?
Everything else is kind of in the budgets.
Okay, um.
Sorry.
May I just?
Conversation at a time.
Sorry, may I just bring it forward, just because it's kind of confusing, the energy efficiency reserve is in common services. The Green and Muni and Comm initiatives is in administration, so I wanted to talk about those particular two, but they're in two different budgets, budgets, even though they're.
Let's go to the space where they are and.
Okay.
Catch them as we go.
Okay.
So uh, legislative budget is on page thirty seven, the notes are on thirty eight and thirty nine, there were no changes from last time. Have the notes brought forward any additional questions? Seeing them, moving on to uh. Page forty one, the administrative services budget, there was uh, some amendments in the uh, lines two one one zero, twenty one forty two. Twenty two forty and uh, twenty seven fifty five that I think are explained. On pages forty three through forty five, um, Director Ambley, do you want to, or Mister M Taz, do you want to speak to any of that, or council, do you have questions? You don't?
Yep, Mister Chair, um, so the wages and the benefits increased uh, to reflect that to IT personnel that we were proposing. Um, and then the computer maintenance and subscription, which is twenty two forty decreased by sixty thousand. Because we will be reducing, um, we will be limiting our contract with that third party um, software provider. Or uh, IT consultant. And then also twenty seven fifty five, which is transferred to other organizations, this is the. Athabasca District Egg Society and the Boyle District Egg Society uh, transfers that are included here. Which increased uh, forty seven thousand five hundred from ninety two thousand five hundred to a hundred and forty thousand. And uh, Mister Chair, I would also like to point out uh. That on page forty seven of the agenda. You see that the assist schools and bus costs as per county policy twenty six thirteen. You see that there's only fifteen thousand sitting in twenty twenty five, uh, it should be following through to all the way to twenty twenty nine, we will correct that in the next uh, viewing.
Thank you, good catch. That's on page forty seven, the very first line under rec grants, assist schools and busing costs, policy twenty six thirteen. The future budgeting did not include the number in there, admin is gonna add that number in, that's at the top of page forty seven, Councilor Holland. So you'll see in twenty twenty five, it says fifteen thousand, and there's zero on the other end. Councilor Anderson?
Page forty seven, I have a couple of questions. First, um, with the assist community halls with operating costs. I'm wondering, just because of the cost increases that we've seen, if we should not budget for some amount of escalation. Of that cost through the years, um, that's a lot of different buildings, you're do, you're going to see some cost escalations. Um, just across that many buildings, so I would encourage us to consider. Um, increasing that amount by a certain amount each year, just to. Make sure that that budget is enough to cover that. Um.
Is there any um, objection, council, on that, asking admin to put inflation factor on that line? Two or three percent, something like, I I I'm gonna just speak to briefly, Councilor, one of the, I think on that one it makes sense, there's good value in that, but I think one of the worries that I would. Say we want to be careful about not doing just an automatic inflation factor on every budget category, is not all items change, and that. It's an easy way for your budget to just creep unnecessarily, so we want to test. In my personal view, every year, we should, most of these items, we should test every year to say. Is that still workable for the upcoming year, but the floor remains yours.
And. Further to that page, public engagement, including the budget engagement for eleven thousand dollars, is budgeted for fifteen thousand dollars this year, can you? Through the chair to administration, what can we expect to see um? For that fifteen thousand dollars in budget engagement?
Um, and so the seven thousand dollars works out to about a hundred and twenty five dollars per person that answered the survey. Uh, so administration, I'll leave that question to you, do, are we expecting? A deeper level of engagement or?
Yeah, Mister Chairman. It's really been our, it's just the first year that we've ever surveyed the public, so um. As the saying goes in advertising, uh, results may vary, um. Uh, you know, we we hope that the program grows and the survey actually grows and it's. Uh, but it was the first year and we engaged as much as we could. Uh, do we think that there should be more engagement in the future of the services and how we're serving residents? Absolutely. So um, we're including in the budget, we're happy to discuss further with council as we move through the year, if there's better ways to do it.
Um, Councilor Anderson, the floor remains yours, do you have additional, Councilor Capitaine?
Um, I just wanted to add a thought to that, and you uh, CIO said exactly what I was thinking, it was the first time we gave that a try. Um, I don't like to look at it, especially in a pilot project, as it costs so much per person that replied. Uh, for me, the value was a being able to say that we had engagement provided, that. I had something to talk to people about, to let them know where they could go, whether they chose to or not, I mean, they say they need a horse to water, right? But to me, the value is there, especially if it continues to the year, if it becomes a known thing, people will look for it. And then they will know that we are actively engaging, whether they choose to participate, now it's on them. And I would happily continue that, I thought the survey was a great thing to promote.
Further questions on this page, Councilmen?
I guess getting back to uh, page forty regarding the IT personnel. I'm uh, very happy to see that is coming forward to hiring two more people. Regarding IT, because it is a nightmare. And not having people in here uh, to actually. Be hands on is is a is a definite positive that I, I very much like to see. We come first full circle? I very much like to see. We come first full circle. We're back to it. Perfect. Thank you.
It reminds me of a cartoon I once saw where it was the, around the constitutional talks and. Seems like you're back at square one, but Counselor Holland, your hand was up?
Thank you. Uh, page forty seven, twenty seven, sixty, transfer to reserve. The Green Municipal and Community Initiatives Policy twenty eight, sixty. Okay, we have two different um. Green energy efficient type reserves. And again, one is from in further up in common services. Um, I am not against green municipal and community initiatives. I'm not against. Energy efficiencies. I I think it's extremely important, but I question, do we need two different reserves for that? Um, which brings me to the dreaded cap levy. Uh, as we're seeing last year, twenty seven hundred, thirty eight dollars, remember the first start was only from October, get it totally.
Um, is that, is that inside the administration ministry of services budget?
It's part of the twenty eight, sixty policy for the green unit. That's where the funding comes from.
I I guess I'm going to ask. If we want to get into a policy discussion, I just not sure if the whole councils is prepared as you are. If you've been working on that, I I just want to make sure we're focused on budget, but the floor remains here.
I'll I'll just float the boat and then see where if people want to jump off or or jump in. Um. Basically, the way I look at it is that we're looking at it a very highly administrative um function to properly administrate. A cap levy, to properly make sure that the audits are being done, so that we know that what is supposed to be coming in is coming in, et cetera, et cetera. And we're currently looking in twenty twenty four that was sent out in the email uh prior. And thank you again very much for those, that information. It's so very valuable. That by the end of September, we're looking at twenty one thousand, four hundred seventy two dollars and forty three cents added to that twenty seven, thirty eight. We budgeted ten thousand um, and I see that that's of course exceeded that that particular budget. But does administration, I guess, is the, through the chair to administration, feel that the twenty one thousand, four seventy two plus the last bit? We're going to receive in this last quarter um, is worthy of keeping, or is it an administrative cost? That pretty much cancels out what we're doing by receiving this revenue.
Mr. Chairman, I I think that we uh have previously told counsel that our intent was to try to get through budget this year, but. Bring a reserve policy for council discussion, hopefully early in the new year. Uh, we really don't have a whole lot of policy on reserves. Um, you know, we should. Um, it's it's fair for the public to know why we save for certain initiatives. Um, what the target is, what we're saving for. Um, part of that is so that we don't over save. We're not trying to overtax the public. We're trying to save for certain reasons and we want that to be transparent. So we absolutely need a better reserve policy. Your discussion is leading right into that. And it's um, I wouldn't say that there's an administrative nightmare with the cap levy. Issue right now. It's a very uh voluntary program. Uh, so we're not really um. Yeah, it's not an administrative nightmare. It is what it is. I think the bigger picture is is. Overall, all the reserves, because we've got a bunch of different ones, are are we on the right track? And we need that discussion with counsel. And it's probably tied a little bit to some tangible capital asset. Info that we don't quite have, but we'll we'll do our best.
So the budget is based on the policies we have. Um, do you think we should be increasing or decreasing that amount?
Um, for right now, being that budgets are amendable, I recommend that we leave it as it sits for the Green Municipal uh Community Initiatives. However, as you mentioned, it is a voluntary program. And so somebody who decides that they don't want to be volunteer for this. We would have to then go out and audit to make sure.
For for me, factual truth telling, it is not a voluntary program. It is a bylaw that is required. Now, people may not participate. That's like saying speed limits and seat belts are voluntary.
Okay.
Like, let's, let's.
Sorry, I use that word. Pardon me. I use, I I followed that same wording. And yes, it is a bylaw. If somebody chooses not to follow the bylaw. Then we have to go, right. We have an enforcement piece, which then, of course, increases that administrative cost, which was what I was referring to.
Other questions on the budget administrative pages, Counselor Gerlock? I wasn't sure if your hand was up or if you were.
Getting back to the review that was done, uh. Somehow. It doesn't seem like valuable information. When you ask somebody, do you think we should be spending more money on it or less money, or is it too much, or or whatever? What I'd like to see is, are they satisfied with service again? Because we sit around the table and we argue about it. None of us can make up our minds. Some say it's good, some say it's bad. I don't know how people can make a decision without any information.
And I think in the next, in the next, the next year, there will be more opportunity based on what the CEO has told us to. Dig deeper into what you'd like to see in the survey and how you want that engagement to to take place. So I think that will come for you. Hey, page forty eight, fire protection. Budget, um. Are there any, the uh notes are on page forty nine through fifty two. Uh, their. Administration, do you want to make any comments on the things that are in yellow that have changed, just so we know why they've changed and Mr. M Taz?
Mr. Chair, so we increased uh contracted contracted repairs equipment for twenty four thousand, five hundred to factor in costs for a. Fleet tire replacement program, public works, fire skid maintenance, portable equipment maintenance, and any unplanned uh maintenance. And we also increased uh other expenses for forty two, fifty for fire occupational testing.
Other questions from the floor, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. Number eighteen fifty, local government grant on page forty nine states that we. Receive an annual contribution from each the Summer Village of Maywata Beach and the Summer Village of Bondis for ten thousand dollars each. Um, I'm just wondering, when was the last time this contribution was negotiated?
Chief Shalpai. There's a chair on the side if you want it.
I'll I'll take it to you, uh, any, any, any uh need here, sir. Um, so through the chair to Counselor Anderson, uh, so. We have to look at all our summer village agreements across the board. It's been in place since uh. Well over a decade, the the rates we charge the two summer villages in the east side of the county. Um, it's not exactly ten thousand dollars. It is based on uh assessed values. Um, equalized assessment rates and the cost of the Boyle Fire District. That that factors into that. So that number isn't specifically ten, but it's been right around that number for a period of time. And it is something that is on the radar for review in twenty twenty five.
So just for clarity, you you incorporate and consider that this fire protection is provided by both. The county through our various halls and the Boyle District.
That's correct.
Counselor Anderson, do you have the floor anymore? Questions? Counselor Holland, I think I saw your hand go up.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of things, just to make sure that we're um count caring for the five hundred thousand, as we mentioned in the summary. Okay, good enough. Um, and I'm sorry, but my eyes aren't really focusing on this tiny little print. Do we have um fire smarting? Do we have money in the budget for fire smart?
Twenty one, no. That's, that's eighteen fifty one?
Eighteen fifty one.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, there's fire smart is listed under eighteen fifty one.
Sorry, it's so little. There we go.
But, uh, Mr. Chair, twenty two, thirty four.
There.
And twenty two, thirty four. Sorry, that one was a grant, my.
That was a grant. And what was the other one? Sorry?
Twenty two, thirty four. It's on page fifty. It's the second.
There we go. Fire smart, okay. That's not very much.
So it's uh seventy five hundred dollars per year.
Okay, so there is currently, I believe, Wamanisa has a grant, another grant out for fire smarting fifteen thousand. Are we able to put a motion through to apply for that so that we can try and pad some of this budget?
Um, I think, is that a? Is that something that should come, actually is its own thing to a meeting, rather than an off the cuff, off the fly adjustments, because then there's no RFD and there's no discussion.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could answer this real quickly. I think Chief Shalapie knows about every fire smart grant and. Is on top of it and is applying, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, that's correct. And uh for our next council meeting on the thirty first, it is our intention to bring forward a uh RFD regarding uh three of fire smart grant applications. We did do. Uh, four or five, can't recall exactly how many we needed in in time, but we did do several applications um earlier this fall. And we do need an RFD from council to support those projects as well. So we'll be in front of council uh next week for discussions.
Counselor uh Chamsak?
Um, and just to note that a particular grant is eligible for municipalities and fire departments, nonprofits, so on and so forth.
Counselor Holland, the floor remains yours.
Um, being, so the fire smart, this this particular professional consulting, this is a fire smart grant application assistance. So that's what that budget is for. We don't actually have a fire smart itself budget to go out and and, you know, check somebody's properties for them and say, okay, this is what you need to do. We don't have that in our budget.
Uh, through the charity counselor, Holland, no, we don't have that funding upfront. Uh, we've relied on grant applications. We've been very successful in the past. Uh, with those grant applications, so we don't have a specific line. In terms of public education, we do have um some funds in twenty nine, ninety one, which would in. Include fire smart education to the public, but in terms of actually having money set aside for a big fire smart campaign, no, we rely on the grant funding.
May I offer? Um, I would like to personally, and I would, again, this is up to counsel, but I would like to see. Some funds set aside for that. Um, I don't know what is appropriate, what is not the norm, would ten thousand be sufficient to start? I don't know. But I would definitely like to see a figure in there um that. Provides that education piece.
CEO Beck?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I think this would require, like, maybe we need to bring back the fire services review for council. Um, it's certainly mentioned in there. But you can't start every program all at once unless Chief Shalapie gets a few more staff. So we can only do what we can do. Um, is it in our future that we should be doing that? We should be going out in the subdivisions. Uh, with some summer staff and maybe helping people fire smart their properties? Absolutely. We're not there yet.
Thank you for that.
Other questions? Seeing none on the fire program, no more questions. Let's move on to. Page number fifty four. This is the uh emergency management, highway sixty three, emergency services. The notes for that are go on page fifty three, or sorry. Oh, sorry, that's. Sorry, I punched the hole in the wrong side of the paper. The notes go on page fifty five and fifty six. Questions? Seeing none, on to the enforcement services budget on page fifty seven. Uh, we have uh. Budget on fifty seven and the notes on page fifty eight and fifty nine. Uh, we've note the addition of the positive ticketing program that was brought up last time. And uh. I had one question. Sorry, I see your hand, Councilman Minz. I'm going to ask my question first, just because it's already talking. Under contracted services, I missed this last time, the animal pound and veterinary service decreased. By about forty five thousand dollars. Is that just to align what we actually spent with our projections?
Um, Mr. Chair, we we did a reduction because we, that's more in line with what our actual spending was. Uh, we were unsuccessful, unsuccessful with our RFP four pound services. So we're currently looking at a uh multi municipality approach to this. Um, we have some upcoming meetings with other municipalities in the same position, so we're looking at that, but we don't have any sort of dollar figure around that as of yet.
Counselor Minz, floor is yours.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank uh administration for bringing that back regarding the positive ticketing program. I think I asked a question in the committee of the whole last time. Where where that was, and thank you very much for bringing that in.
Counselor. Other questions? Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. For animal pound and veterinary services, we had seventy five thousand budgeted for this year, plus another thirty one hundred. Budgeted for animal rescue and foster costs. And in twenty twenty five, it's being reduced to a combined thirty three thousand, six hundred. I'm just wondering if that's adequate, um, given the increased number of. Uh, dog calls that we seem to be hearing about at committee of the whole.
Uh, Chief Shalpai.
So through the, through the chair to Counselor Anderson, at this point, that's a best projection. Um, and what we've actually seen cost wise, uh. We are seeing a significant, significant number of dog calls. Um, the unfortunate truth is a lot of times we're unable to ha- help individuals. Um, so we are referring them to third party animal rescues uh elsewhere. Because we just don't have the capacity to to seize animals and and to house them. So um. That's uh reflective of a true cost um in terms of level of service. Is it the ideal level of service? I'd say no, but at this point, we really don't have uh many options unless we can, again, work towards some sort of intermunicipal um. Solution to this, because it's not just Nathabaski County issue. This is a a widespread issue in Northern Alberta.
Which is coming back to us.
Thank you. And further to that, um, I noticed on line fifteen, thirty three. That we're increasing our projected traffic fines by twenty five thousand dollars this year. And I'm just kind of wondering if that's a realistic target. Um. Uh, very. Essential service that I think we provide in this community is responding to calls and complaints that. Are really non-fine generating cases, you know, responding to those dog calls, responding to other types of bylaw complaints. And I think those are essential, extremely important services to provide for our community. And I just wouldn't want to put pressure on our bylaw officers to focus more on the traffic fines when they do have so many of those other calls. And complaints to respond to.
So the question I think is, is it um realistic?
Uh, through the charity counselor Anderson. So I'll be the first one to say I do not promote a quota system or a performance expectation. The hundred thousand dollars is to uh. Is based on our projections for twenty twenty four, once all fines come in. That's with the inclusion of the third officer, we've seen higher than projected revenue.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Wallack?
Um, under twenty two, seventy licenses and permits, there's a few like the the softwares that don't continue on. Is that a miss or they got moved or not using that?
Through the charity counselor Wallack, we're actually looking at transitioning to different software. So if you look at the top line, Omnigo will become MRF. So it is some software is being discontinued in terms of to shift to a better solution for us.
Additional questions? Seeing none? Let's move on to the common services. No, it's been an hour. Does anybody feel the need for a ten minute break? Let's do seven to ten. So we'll come back a little around the twenty five after. Or seven to ten, I think we're gonna start at the seven minute end. We are uh moving on to page number. We're moving on to page number sixty. After we've reconvened. Um, page sixty is a common services budget. Notes are on page sixty one through sixty um. Through sixty four. Are there any questions? Counselor Holland.
So this brings me back to that um energy efficiency reserve that we chatted about, and I understand about the reserve clause and all that information that may be coming. But I guess just more than anything, this came from a twenty twenty one report. Um, thank you for sending that information out. It didn't look like it was implemented until twenty twenty three, however, from that twenty twenty one report, I don't remember. Implement.
Just so that everybody can catch up, we're at page sixty four on line twenty seven sixty is the line item that I think. Counselor Holland is referring to.
Thank you, appreciate that. So I don't remember that. So my guess, my question. Is out there, we have one an emergency, pardon me, a reserve set aside for energy efficiency or green municipal. Uh initiatives. To me, they're the exact same thing, or are they not? Same concept?
Through the charity of counselor Holland, um. The green initiative is strictly uh related to the cap levy, whereas this um the energy efficiency was meant to be for a. I believe it was for um a consultant um. To review uh our energy efficiency and uh come up with solutions uh to make everything more efficient.
Right. And so basically, his recommendation was as we set aside this reserve for any future. Um. Would we not be able to combine the two? So that we have one green initiative uh fund, or is this something that that does need to be separated?
I think that seems like a policy discussion, but Counselor Capitanic, do you want to comment?
Um, just to um. My memory serves me that the. Capital E green initiative money was for residents to apply if they wanted to. Do something green and then they could get uh was potential grant for them, right?
Twenty eight sixty fifty percent of the fund could be for residents, fifty percent for municipality.
Okay, so I'm wondering, would we still have to keep the resident portions ever?
Um, I would say that for me personally, that we remove one of the energy efficiency reserve, leave it in the green municipal initiative. Uh with the policy that's attached to it and have one reserve, not two different ones. So that's.
But today we have policy in place and we have a decision in place. And we have a reserve policy coming up. So the question around budget is. With like whether it's in one bucket or two buckets. Is in my view irrelevant to the budget discussion. If one has a policy discussion, that's different. But do we have the right amounts in budget for what we're going for the decisions we've already made?
Right. And I would prepare to say, remove the energy uh efficiency reserve. And remove that ten thousand from the budget.
So I think my understanding of the difference is the cap levy is funded by the cap levy. This is where actually. Intentionally putting money away for energy efficiency into a reserve. Is that correct?
Okay, to the chair to counselor Wallack, yeah, that's correct. Um, the the green municipal is dependent on how much cap levy. So if we receive five thousand, we only transfer five thousand to reserve. And like this year, we have received twenty one thousand, so the intention will be to transfer the twenty one thousand to reserves uh under green municipal.
So Councilor Holland is proposing that that item be scrapped. Is there widespread support for that? I think let's, it doesn't look like that's the case. Other questions around uh common services budget? Counselor Anderson?
Okay. Um, I'm wondering if the snow clearing reserve can specifically be discussed during the reserve policy discussion as well. Uh, I think we implemented that with good intentions, but I'm not sure that it's being utilized or carried out in. The way that we had originally intended and. I don't think that. The way that we originally intended would require thirty thousand dollars to be added to the original reserve on an annual basis. I think that was a one time contribution that we just wanted to make sure that money was there in case we needed it. And so I don't think we actually need to include that thirty thousand dollars on an annual basis.
So I think you said the question then is really, do we want to continue to grow that fund or was the original intent to put a certain amount of money as we had it if it was available, needed? But not to grow it indefinitely. Councilor Minz, do you remember?
Yeah, I in a way I totally agree with that because. That fund there was done on a on a.
Snow year.
On a, yeah. I was gonna say a whim, but a snow year uh when all of a sudden we had all this snow and. And everybody wanted to hire every grader in Alberta to try to clear it, but. Um. That this fund could be could be scrapped as far as I care and. If we need to hire equipment, we go ahead and hire equipment. It's like, it's like when we uh have a big uh. Rain event and all of a sudden there's roads washed out and everything like that. We don't have a special fund for washouts. We have an emergency fund. And it's classified as an emergency, so. So I I don't see any, any, any reason in actually keeping the the uh. So the reserve fund going.
So there's two parts to that. One is, do we continue to fund it the in this year's budget? And the second is. Do we combine it with something else, which I think the second part falls in with what the CIO has told us. We're gonna bring a reserve fund policy and talk about all of that. On the question about what's in this year's budget, do we leave it at zero or thirty? Zero. Is there any objection to putting it to zero? For twenty twenty five going forward? I'd make that motion. Uh, we need a motion, we're just gonna admin will.
You know that now we're gonna get eight feet of snow this winter.
But we still got money in the bank. Counselor Holland?
Yeah, just just as a note, um if we the twenty twenty four budget hit, which hasn't been reserved of the reserve hasn't been transferred yet, but we would have eighty thousand dollars in that reserve. Um, so uh, which is again, thank you very much for this because that really makes a difference on what we're padding and what we're not.
Are there other questions? Um. I had under fourteen ten, which is on page sixty one of your agenda. Can you just remind us uh what we sell to the summer villages and the group listed uh? In A through F there. Line fourteen ten on page sixty one. Do we know what we sell to? All those guys? And I know there's no changes from last time. It's just because it was a single line last time and we. Now we're seeing what's what's in the in the sausage, we wanna.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I'm gonna have to uh drill down into this and get back to you about this.
Okay. Super. And then the other on uh fifteen sixty, it could because um. Part of my life I spend looking at real estate stuff. Um, I'm noticing that we have not uh. I guess the question that comes out of that line is, when was the last time this rent was reviewed? And or increased to ensure it's at a fair market value?
Sorry, what line is that?
Fifteen sixty on page sixty one. I think I know the answer, but.
Mr. Chair, that hasn't been reviewed, but uh. We can review it again and come up with an updated number.
That's a different motion, and I don't think I'd be proposing that. It was more just to know if we regularly look at it, and I feel like we. Have somebody who. Was recently introduced to council that may be doing some line work, so I'm content to leave it sit for now. Did I see another hand up? Counselor Holland?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. And again, this is totally operational, but it's just for my own satisfaction. When we're looking at all these, the notes, the the from the GL fourteen ten, for example, that has what, six, seven uh different items in it? How are you keeping track of that? Is there some code for the GL or is this on a spreadsheet?
Through the chairs to counselor Holland, fourteen ten is the code. So anything related to these services to uh. These uh villages would be coded to fourteen ten, but under specifically common services. So if you wanted to uh look at anything specific, we would go to the fourteen ten code and all these uh sales would be recorded in that.
Okay, but you would have, they're not in their own little subcode to be able to pull that up, but you would have to go through and sort through it all.
No.
So is the GL a little skinny? For codes?
Yeah, um, well, we we did update the GL from ten thousand codes down to twenty five hundred.
Right.
And at one point, we did have every single um line item would have a single, every single code. And that just makes way too many codes to keep track of and manage.
Councilmen's?
Thank you.
Uh, to the chair, um. When you ask summer villages, what would we actually sell to summer villages? All of a sudden, I got my mind working here, uh. Sanding and and snow plowing would uh would be sold to some villages. With through agreements and that, so that would come in and probably hit there being it's not a, it's one lumped in general ledger code, right? It's that's where that would come into play. Maybe. If we accidentally had to go out there and steam a culvert, something like that, eh, you know, just to help out or.
Other questions on common services? Seeing none, Counselor Grealish, your hand going up or you? They. We're in the road construction budget. That looks like it starts on page sixty five. But the notes on uh page sixty six, sixty seven. Sixty eight and sixty nine. It's a lot of notes for such a short budget. Council, so is does anybody but except Counselor Holland have a question? Man, Councilor Minz, Anderson, Holland. Somebody else gets to ask their questions first.
Uh, line twenty two fifty, um. In the uh, where's I got Chip Seal Airport. Airport Road, um. Where is that?
So twenty two fifty, the notes for that are on page sixty seven.
It is uh. Thought it was twenty two fifty.
Ms. Chairman, I believe I can anticipate your question. We we previously showed it. And it was a three, three fifty, three hundred fifty thousand and you're. I would imagine you're asking where that is.
Yeah, um, it was down to one point nine million.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, that will be in the capital side of things. So if we look on.
Okay.
If you look on page one oh five, you will see under uh roads, Cape Sealing Pilot. That's the three hundred and fifty thousand that you might be looking.
Actually, uh, I just found it here under under the uh. County hard surfacing program, Chip Seal Airport Road and County and and Century Estates. Um.
That's on page sixty seven?
Yeah.
It is um down near the bottom third of the page.
All of a sudden, we start hitting seven hundred and fifty thousand all the way across there and I'm wondering like. Why? Like all of a sudden, and it looks like kind of like a tickle trunk behind you with the slush fund, eh? So I I'm just wondering as it keeps progressing across there, is that just an error?
Just the whole mind. I think this will be the subject of further. I don't, I think we only barely begun to. Have a discussion about the hard surfacing program, but I think this section. Um, is specifically re uh, so this would be resurfacing um extra lifts of asphalt, everything else.
Oh.
And I don't believe that we've really been budgeting much in the last few years. So I think this is a warning that in twenty six or beyond. We have to start investing in recapping a bunch of the hard surface that we already have.
Perfect.
That's really what this section is, is and it's so it's a placeholder and it's it's a big placeholder, seven hundred fifty thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
But for um. In the prior view of this budget. That line item was at one point nine million dollars.
Okay.
And and uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to also point out the. the reason we don't have anything for twenty twenty-five is because we recently did the hot crack ceiling at the airport. That should last two years uh instead of one. And then we're also planning to doing the resurfacing at the Century Estates. As the conditions of the road are poor, instead of doing the, the chip seal.
Chip seal?
Yeah. That's why you don't see the figure seven and fifty in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, what did I write down? I had Minz, Anderson, Holland. Floor is remains yours.
Okay, uh, page sixty-nine. Uh, line twenty-nine sixty, um, grass mowing goes from five five thousand to fifteen thousand. Is there a reason why that went up to fifteen thousand? Just inflation?
Through the chair to compliments, that's just to reflect the actual costs.
Okay. Perfect. And then the other one was uh under major road construction. All of a sudden we uh ditching and brushing for thirty thousand.
That's just further down the page.
Yeah.
To the chair, to uh Councilman's, uh, this was a correction initially, uh, we had the hundred and thirty thousand in damage claims on twenty-two seventy-two. That was there by error. It was meant to be thirty thousand and uh, it was meant to be for ditch brushing. So we removed the hundred and thirty from damage claims and only moved the thirty here to ditch brushing. And this is, I believe this was due to beavers uh keep plugging up uh that area which uh yeah, which resulting in us having to go in there and get it cleared and do the ditch brush.
Mister Chairman, yeah, it's that, it's that ditch on the north side of Paxton Road. It hasn't had brushing in many years. And uh our people tell us it's time that we made that a special project and just got it brushed and cleaned up.
Okay. Yep, no, perfect. Thank you.
Or remains yours?
Nope, no, I'm good. I'm good. That's perfect.
Councilman Anderson, then Holland, and then Capitac. You're good? Counselor Holland, there you go.
Oh, wow, okay. Um, in our last meeting, uh, we had uh briefly just asked, um Director Willie to see if she could come back with an estimate of pulling up that Fiberman, thank you. I'm like, the proper word for it in on the Parable Hill. And just wondering if that has come back and if that will be included in this in the future.
CEO?
I'm told it's about thirty-five thousand.
We can talk about putting it in here?
Can we talk?
Yeah, we can confirm whether or not it's already in here. We can bring that back in the next round.
It might, it might be in here. That's what I, but I just would like to know if that is the case. It just might not say Parable Hill.
We just have a grader with a ripper. We can do it for, yeah, very little.
Well, we've been asking.
Do you have to pull years? I mean, it's operational, but does it have to be like, you just have to destroy it or do you have to take it up and throw it away?
We'll figure it out, Mister Chairman.
Can I comment on that? Because uh we've done uh uh lots of it. You bring it up with two graders and put it in the center and you haul it to the uh pit and use it for floor gravel. It's the best thing you can do with it. It's under maintenance. That's where we used to do it. It's just under maintenance roadways. Boom. We'd move everything in and gone. So very easy.
Counselor Holland?
Thank you. And and don't shoot me because I'm kind of stuck on reserves here for a little bit, but um our road uh road construction reserve sitting at two point seven.
Can you give us a line and page number, please?
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the sheet that we were given over the email on what our reserves, what our accounts are uh in our reserves and what their totals are. So looking at our road construction at two point seven million, I'm just looking to see where the reserves, are we stopped putting in reserves or is that in a different spot?
Through the chair to Counselor Holland, uh, right now we don't actually have a road construction reserve set up. That's why I do have a blank line. If you look at the budget summary, um that could be uh up to constant discretion if you'd like a reserve setup, but currently there isn't a road construction. There must have been one back in the past and that balance you see there has been set up from the past.
From the past, so we just have not continued to add to it. So where's the emergency funds coming from? For example, when we have an emergency. Out of which reserves?
So through the chair to Counselor Holland, so usually it would be a general operating reserve.
General operating. So the road construction reserve is strictly for road construction. We have nothing for um, emergency other than it, okay. So the thirty thousand that we just took away for the um snow plowing, I'm wondering if that's something that we should be considering putting back in to the road construction and maintenance or if that's of interest. I just would hate to see that we have some massive emergency and we don't have the capability of handling it.
CEO, do you have any advice?
Mister Chairman, again, that's good planning. Um, I think it'll, we'll just defer to when we bring back the reserve for discussion, but we do have other reserves. There's, there's one called General Reserve, which is the all encompassing for basically for anything you want. So it's not like we don't have any. Should we be planning specifically for road construction? One hundred percent. Uh, so we'll bring that back when we bring back the reserve discussion.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gerlick, this seems in your alley. You got any, on your lane? Do you have any uh road questions you want to ask for while we're on this? What's that? The other long-term plans? Other questions, Councilman Minz, your hand is up. Floor is yours.
Yeah, I just keep, I just keep going back to it. I remember last year, uh, we had we had, we, we started discussing and taking road construction out just due to the fact of our of our uh uh reclamation and reclamation is on gravel pits and 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 all this stuff and 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 I was a little bit uptight about losing road construction. So I said, I'll, I'll vote for this budget if, if we put it a million dollars away for or uh uh in reserves. And I don't see it. I thought, I went back and actually looked and I couldn't even find a a motion, but I thought I made a motion to, to put a million dollars away in reserves for road construction. So I don't, where is?
Uh, do we do it for road construction or for um gravel pit reclamation again? Road construction? Who was here at the time? CEO back, how's your memory? Those first few turbulent months?
My memory's not that good. I think what I would instead just say that um, ask uh Mister MTS, at the end of the year, how much did we uh at, at year end? How much did we end up transferring to reserve? You, I think that's a different question because I think there's well over a million that got transferred to reserve.
Okay.
But that is correct.
Yeah, that would be unrestricted. I'm sorry.
That would be unrestricted.
So we can, Counselor Anderson's looking at the past budget. Are there any other questions related to uh road and bridge construction? I I mean, following up on the question that came up around the twenty twenty-nine sixty and the, the mowing agreements. So do we make new agreements? Like, did those agreements get increased? Because how do we go from five thousand to triple that? I mean, I know it's still only fifteen thousand.
I'll, I'll try to answer this, Mister Chairman. It was based on a, a meeting I was in and so uh I only know enough uh that I won't uh give away the whole story. I think that staff are anticipating that some other groups may want to get into agreements with us. We we have some differing levels of service in some of the subdivisions depending on who they are. And we would suggest to council via policy that maybe this initiative, we need to have a bit of a, an equitable level of service throughout the county. And so this would be moving in that direction. And we'll see if we can. So this is a bit of a placeholder that it may go up based on agreements with community groups. Let's put it that way.
That satisfies me. Um, Counselor Anderson, did you find that answer to that reserve question? Are there any further questions on road construction and maintenance? Or can I jump ahead to the community transportation? Okay, community transportation budget. Counselor Holland, do you want to open that discussion by maybe talking about the most recent meeting and the proposed budget and what the reactions at the community transportation meeting were to that?
Thank you, and I will ask for help if I should need it. I wasn't prepared to have a, have a bit of a report here. Uh, the quick and dirty on this one um was we brought this to the committee. Uh, the committee was uh receptive. Um, but it, they are also going through budget talks at this time, so they were given twenty, so twenty, thirty and forty um, thousand uh in reserves to take back to their uh council to have their deliberations and come back and say, hey, yeah, we're in and we're out. Um, so this, of course, is the uh minimum um is in the budget for this time.
Other um other questions on the community transportation budget? Counselor Anderson?
I, when I originally thought of this community transportation reserve, and this goes back to our bigger discussion around reserves, I was expecting much more than twenty thousand to be put into a reserve just um, after hearing about the age of the current vehicles and the price of replacing them, I expected it to be much more. And I was actually prepared to advocate for the thirty thousand taken out of the snow removal reserve to be added to this, so that we would top it up to fifty. Um, I just think that we if we have that money and we're just going to shuffle it, we should put it here and somewhere that I think would be absolutely put to good use to meet the community's needs in the future. I would have advocated for that, but I think it's going to be part of a larger discussion in our reserves policy.
Under reserve policy, Counselor Capitac.
Well, I feel like the, the motive is pure and, and, and good. Um, I would want to hear back what the partners are prepared to contribute first because I think sometimes if we go over the top, there, they might feel an expectation that they can't meet. And um I think your committee and budget negotiations would likely lend a direction. And if it's fifty, it's fifty. And if it's more or less it is, but I think we definitely need to to hear from them directly what they can contribute to that reserve.
Um, Counselor Holland, the floor is yours.
Just as a quick follow-up, if council's feeling very generous, Director Wilkinson did an amazing uh find on a wonderful unit that uh we could purchase right away. That uh would be absolutely amazing and a huge benefit. So um we could opt that just a little bit more and we would be covered, just if you're feeling generous.
Perhaps the committee could put an RFD in front of council and then we'd have something to make a decision with. Uh, Counselor Chance, you've been very quiet today.
What is the cost? Can I ask?
Getting off topic, but
It's um, just, it's below one fifty.
So just as a point of information, the way the split works on this, the uh county pays two-thirds, the, our partners pay one-third, so on, you know, twenty thousand dollars going into a reserve fund uh is about six thousand bucks between the two partners. And I'm personally of the view that when we have this tool in terms of a fleet of vehicles and we wear them out for the common purpose, that as we wear them out, we should be putting money back in so that we're always kind of whole uh in terms of how we're, how we're doing that, rather than wear them out and then wonder where the money comes from. We, because it's, it's easy to keep up with your depreciation. Are, are there any other questions on uh, do you want to speak, Director Wilkinson?
I just wanted to mention and add to what Counselor Holland had to say was that I was asked by the committee to provide scenarios on twenty thirty and forty. And so I did send that back to the committee members as well as their uh CAOs.
Twenty thirty and forty thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Counselors? Okay. Okay, so any further questions on that community transportation budget? We're happy. Uh, following up on the road construction, Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I found in the minutes from the December twelfth Regular County Council Meeting, Resolution twenty-three, seven thirteen, moved by Counselor Anderson to pause road construction for one year and to reallocate one million dollars to an existing restricted reserve for road construction pending receipt of a twenty twenty-five construction plan. That motion carried seven to two.
So that was motion twenty-three, seven, one, three from the December twelfth meeting, sir. Seven, one, three. Okay, moving along, uh, airport. So the plan, I see lunch is here. I was thinking we'd run till twelve, break, and then try to wrap up shortly thereafter. The airport budget um has had some amendments that were based on discussion at the last meeting. Are there any further questions now that you have the notes? The notes, uh, this, the notes from page seventy-four, seventy-five. And the budget is on seventy-three. Seeing none? Moving along to page seventy-six. Uh, water supply budget, the notes for that are on page seventy-seven and seventy-eight. Are there any questions? Counselor Holland, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, just really quick, um, again, sorry, but it's with these reserves. So in twenty twenty-three, I believe it was forty-two, forty-four thousand that we had budgeted for and put away in reserves. Then we bumped it to twenty twenty-four for sixty-two nine. This is item uh line item twenty sixty. And now in twenty twenty-five, we've upped it to a thousand, a hundred thousand, hundred and seven thousand, two hundred. Uh, my question is why?
Mister MTS, is there a formula for that or are those, how were those numbers determined? Because when we're down to the, into the hundreds of dollars on a transfer like that, I assume there's, it's more than.
Mister Chair, uh, those were projected based on, I guess, uh, from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven budget and it's just to carry forward. I did not change any of those numbers, but I can look into uh what, why they're so different.
Okay, and if I may, um, in twenty twenty-three, we actually had a surplus um, listed for water supply and it was a user pay situation. And I'm pretty sure we didn't give rebates back to the users for that surplus, right? And so when I'm looking at this, if we had a surplus uh in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four could possibly be looking at the same because I do believe personally that our uh water rates are over uh, what the cost actually should be. Um, so we'll look at that when we, when that comes back. So I would propose that we actually reduce the transfer to reserves in twenty twenty-five back to what the twenty twenty-three level was, which was forty-four, something forty-four, two, I can't remember. Have it somewhere here. Um, but I would propose uh reducing it, I believe. Oh, here we go, forty-four thousand, three hundred was in twenty twenty-three. I propose we return that. Reason being is in twenty twenty-four, we put our reserves up to sixty-two nine, but now we have a deficit of twenty thousand. And I'm sitting back looking at user pay once again. And then the subsidy will come from across the county to fund that reserve. Um, I, I'm struggling with it. So I'm, I'm sitting back going, we need to reduce the reserves here back to the forty-four, three, I think would be much more reasonable, which of course would drop the deficit as well. Um, and hopefully that we u, we go into a uh countywide subsidization on water.
So comments from the floor, but I, I will, Mister MTS has said he's gonna get back to us on how those numbers were determined, so I'm gonna speak against that idea of making a change based on just to change, like let's, why don't we wait and figure out how that's determined and then make a change with information, not just based on something we don't have the right information for. But where, where is everybody else?
I'm open to adjusting it. I'd just like to know what the calculation is based on first and then make that adjustment. I'm not, I'm not opposed to adjusting it. I just wanted to see the calculation first.
So it's something we can defer to a future meeting? There are enough nod heads. Anyone opposed to that? Okay. Other water questions? Seeing none wastewater? We are at a two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollar deficit on that one. Any questions on the wastewater budget? Hey, so there's no, no questions on wastewater? Can we move on to waste management? So there's no revenue there, which is uh like many things we do. Any questions on those notes? Waste management uh while we're on waste management now, but yeah.
Apologize, um, we went by a little quick. The uh transfer to reserves is zero in twenty twenty-five, but in twenty twenty-seven, we've jumped to forty-two, five. So I'm curious, we currently have in uh the sewer equipment and lines of five hundred and So I'm curious, we currently have in the sewer equipment and lines a five hundred and forty-two thousand dollar reserve. Why wouldn't we be doing any reserves now for this one, for waste wastewater services and then have a great big boost in two years?
This is Chair to Council Holland. Initially, we had actually budgeted some transferring out of the reserves. But we don't actually have any operating reserves set up for wastewater, so I adjusted that. But we didn't put anything in to be transferred into the reserve, but that can certainly be done if.
If in a quick follow up, is the general sewer equipment and lines, is that not the same reserve account for wastewater services?
To Chair to Council Holland, that's specifically for capital addition, so specifically for those lines.
Okay.
Historically, I thought we had put money in reserves to smooth out the the maintenance. So in a year with high maintenance, we wouldn't add. In a year with low maintenance, we would either add to it or leave it neutral, so that it's, so that the the spend on this can be relatively consistent, but the we know that the some years there's a bunch of things to do and other years there's less, but.
Mister Chair, so that would be normally if that was, that would be in operating. So capital is very restricted, so you're limited to only the capital addition, but if we had a operating reserve set up for wastewater, which actually we don't anymore, we used it up, I believe, ending in twenty twenty-four. But if we did have one, that that would be the purpose of it.
So but moving on to other questions on waste wastewater.
We have zero reserves there. So is that a concern?
I know there's a reserve fund policy discussion coming back, and I'm content to look at that in the context of a global discussion.
We could amend the budget at that time, if it's necessary.
Or amendable, you just have to decide when you're adding spending in one area, what you're taking away in another. Because once we get to a place where we set the, you know, we're locked in. Waste management. It looks like a lot of cleanup of old historic masses. Any questions on that? There's been no changes since we last saw. And now that you have the notes, has it spurred any new questions? Seeing none, FCSS. There's been a few minor changes to that. Any questions from the council? The notes run through to page eighty-six. I know we were told that we would see a utilization report in the future. To me, that would be kind of handy as we're making some decisions to have an idea. Are we? Is it, is it funded in a way that, like as the fun, as the as the expense side of this equation grows, or is the funding side following along, and is it something we need to address with our regional partners? We'll wait and see. Does anyone else have questions? Cemeteries. This is very short, no changes since last time, any questions? Seeing none. We are now at planning and development. Let's pause there, because that's a long section. We're on page eighty-nine. Why don't we break for, is twenty minutes adequate for lunch? Pardon me? Let's do twenty, twenty-five. So come back at twenty-five after.
Let's uh reconvene. The October twenty second special county council meeting. Where we left off, we were at item number three point three and we are on page. Eighty nine, we're about to start looking at the planning and development budget. That's page eighty nine, your agenda and the notes are on page ninety and ninety one. There've been no changes to this since the last time you saw the budget. Are there any questions that arise now that you have access to the notes? Councilor Wallack.
Under twenty two, twenty one advertising on page ninety. Are we not advertising in the paper anymore? Does that just get transferred to a different line?
Uh, to the chair, to council wallack, it just got transferred to a different line here. Uh. We didn't get touch. It's.
Oh, sorry, I'm just. Table, no, when you got moved to a different spot?
Yeah, we just moved it. Sorry, I'm sorry. Two one five three.
I gotta say, on behalf of all of us, we appreciate. The uh nimbleness with with which you're able to. Find the last two thousand dollars on a question for us, so um.
Yeah, Mr. Cherry, I I just found it's under two one four three, it got moved.
Two one four three, okay.
Registration fees there. We we don't actually advertise anything specifically. For planning and development, so. It was just misallocation.
I don't see two one four three going up. From twenty twenty four. Sorry. Two oh four three, two two one, is that what we did?
Ms. Chairman, we'll look into it.
Yeah, it's only five, it's five thousand dollars. I think Councilor Wallack is satisfied that uh. This has just been moved and. Unless anybody else specifically wants that, I don't think you need to spend more time following up. Councilor Holland, your hand is on the button.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Thank you. I I know we do advertise for planning and development for um, you know, public hearings and all of those, you know. Kind of things. So would we not want to track that or no?
Ms. Chairman, we'll look into it.
Okay, we're gonna look into it. Ag services. Let's get to page number ninety two. There's been a couple of uh changes there since last time. Mr. M Taz, do you want to talk to, talk to them or do you want to just go to questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there were no actual budget changes. We just reallocated vehicle and equipment rent to gross recoveries is all we did.
Okay, so it's just moved.
The net amount didn't change.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none. We are moving on to recreational services. This is on page ninety six of your agenda. The um. The notes are attached. The major change there was a boil fish pond was changed from a whopping sized. Budget item down to thirty thousand dollars for a conceptual and engagement plan to find out what the community wants there, and that was done at council's. Direction. Are there further questions? You wanna?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, I also just wanted to mention uh mention that we missed factoring in the expense for campsite managers. So you will see the contracted services will go up ninety thousand in the next presentation and also um. We need to add three additional seasonal workers for mowing crew for ninety thousand. As currently we are budgeting uh twelve seasonal workers, however, three more are needed to complete the additional mowing for cemeteries.
Yeah, so we're gonna add, sorry, three more employees.
Three, three, three more seasonal workers, so ninety thousand additional for that. So you will see a total change of a hundred and eighty thousand on this budget. Next viewing.
Oh, sir, Anderson.
On page ninety eight, we have the Boyle Youth and Fitness Center listed as fifteen thousand dollars contributed annually. But we also had the uh Boyle Youth Center. Um, on page forty seven under rec grants for five thousand dollars annually.
Okay, so you said on page ninety eight, it's at fifteen and on page forty seven, it's listed as rec grants.
Yes. Under rec grants right above the assist community halls is teen center contributions, which includes boil for five thousand dollars. And then. Back on page ninety eight, transfer to other organizations, the Boyle Youth Fitness Center is fifteen thousand.
Does that have anything to do with cost sharing of utilities or?
Is it just the Boyle Fitness Center is kind of what I'm questioning?
The one uh to the chair, to counselor Anderson, uh, the one in recreation budget, it's specifically boiled uh fitness center.
So we should just change the title to take out the youth.
Sure.
Counselor Wallack.
I know when we had spoke before about the spray park, is twenty three thousand dollars inaccurate? What our budget was like, what our spend was this year or? Is that more or less?
CAO? Do you remember?
Mr. Chairman, in speaking with the uh Boyle C A O, they still had to get their estimates to us for twenty five, so uh it. When we were at the tri council meeting, he noted that uh we should have a meeting coming up with our new inter municipal committee because they. He acknowledged that he hasn't got a drop budget to it. Yeah, so.
They better hurry before we get ours done. Other questions? Um, but so you've just, we've just been told that we're gonna see another hundred and eighty thousand dollars uh growth on this related to additional mowing and other things. Um, is there a comment from administration where that money is coming from? Or is it just eroding what we would have? Put in repairs at the end of the year.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that will just end up reducing what we uh put to uh reserve. Unrestricted reserve.
Other comments? Okay, moving on to economic development budget. There's been. No changes to that. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Library board. We've had the the changes there. Councilor Capitonic?
Where we, is this where the lobbyists just could be putting it or is that somewhere else?
Seattle. Question was uh any of the money from. Specific contractors for lobbying or other. Is that coming out of economic development? I think we talked about it coming up. Somewhere else.
Ms. Chairman, um, I think we said at the previous meeting that we would uh. Um, once councils made a decision on that, the final answer would be added to the budget. We would put it in the appropriate place and. I believe we've got a closed session item on lobbyists today, so.
Hey, on the library board, questions? On seeing none. On Athabasca County facilities, this is the new um. Budget sheet that is a consolidation of various items from other places in the budget, which is why there's nothing in twenty twenty four. Are there, there's been no changes since last time? Are there any questions? Council Hall, floor is yours.
Just curious for facilities being that there is, is this strictly maintenance or is this something that we also take out of? If we need to enhance or add to or? Is this strictly maintenance?
To the chair to constable Holland, yes, this is strictly maintenance.
Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none. We are moving on to page number one hundred five. There are three changes there. I don't know. This is the capital projects administration. Do you have? These have been explained in the uh. At the beginning, I guess. Um, any comments or questions for council?
Mr. Ms. Chair, yeah, so the only changes are the ones you see that are highlighted. Uh, starting with the large mowing program, the tractor, uh, we reduced the amount from two hundred and fifty thousand down to hundred and ninety thousand because that was initially an error in the budget request. And then as far as the community transportation replacement S U V goes, we've allocated the amount that the village and the town will be paying. You can see that on the uh for the right hand side. Side column. Uh, initially we had twelve thousand just going from taxation just paid by us, but now we've split that among the three organizations. Um, as far as the hamlet signage goes, uh, uh, we are recommended that recommending that we go ahead with that and uh. Director Wilkinson is here to answer any questions related to the hamlet signage.
Questions, uh, Councilor Anderson.
I'm, I understand not being able to do an entire hamlet strategy in time for this year's budget, but. I would be opposed to putting signage, new signage in one of our hamlets without having a sign kind of concept kind of approved by council. That would. Lay the um plans for future signage to be added similar to other. Um, hamlets. I just think that we kind of need to think a little bit bigger. And think of a longer term strategy rather than just jumping the gun and. Adding signage to one minis, uh, one hamlet and then possibly having signage that doesn't match. Further on down the road. Um, I'd also like through the chair to administration, when will we see the hard surfacing project matrix? I kind of expected to see that by this meeting, so.
C A O.
Yeah, um, I'll have to uh work with Director Whaley on that. Unfortunately, she's away right now, so I I don't have an answer for you.
So we'll. It would be reasonable to think for the next budget discussion? Maybe?
Yes, Ms. Chairman. It would be reasonable.
Other? You good? No questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I would. I'm unsure if a cave ceiling pilot or if we want to pursue other projects. Um, I'd really like to see that matrix so we can kind of decide. Are we good with just a keeps cave ceiling prod pilot, or do we want to pursue something bigger for the next year? And? It's hard to do that without the matrix.
Other questions? Counselor Chamsak, you're on deck.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. Looking forward to the matrix, but also with the signage as well. Um, you know, are we gonna be looking at some of the existing signage in our hamlets that are currently already there as models as well? And, you know, and a good strategy and plan of. How to replace and when to replace. I'm looking forward to that. Is that something we're gonna look for?
Um.
Director Wilkinson.
You know, if administration is given the direction by council to do some sort of a hamlet. Uh, study or to assess all the signage in the hamlets, um, you know, we certainly can do that, but that's not a short term, um. Project. This particular project was brought forward by some community members that raised funds for a sign in their community. And so we were looking for a decision from council on how they would be part of that. Solution.
Uh, Counselor Minz, then Capitonic.
I'm just wondering, I might have missed it. Uh, don't see it, um. Sign, uh, welcome to Athabasca County coming in on highway six six three from the east. When, uh, when are we going to actually put one up? So we actually look like we're advertising ourselves, because like I'm, I went there this summer and. Go past a beautiful. Lacklubish sign and turn around and come back and. You still think you're in Lacklubish, because you don't know where the. Where the, uh, boundary line is, and I, I think we need to put some money in the budget if, if it's not there yet and get a sign there.
I think, um. Somewhere in here, I believe I saw money for signs.
Ms. Chairman, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, council was told at a previous meeting that there's actually still money in twenty four for signage that you're talking about. Um, so I'll confirm that, but I was told that as well as there's still money from twenty four that's available. So back to the signage, the other one, so we'll confirm that. That there's money in twenty four. Um, if council would like, uh, a bit of a quick strategy on. So you can adopt a assigned template for the county when someone wants to do that, we will see if we could expedite someone to help us with that if council. Passes a motion to that effect, and we'll just find the money from this year's budget and start working on it.
And C A O, um, so you've said, well, I assume, uh, in terms of your administrative resources, this would mean engaging a third party to help.
Correct, these are, we'll just, it's, it's a sign company to, uh, we'll ask for a couple of proposals from a sign company to. Put together, it's called a way finding or or branding, um, uh, for our signs, a template that we can use for the next ten, fifteen years.
Okay, so administration has told us, uh, they're looking for a decision on the Wonder River one, and, um, you know, potentially if we're interested in making sure they're common. To pass a motion to look for a template, uh, so we can have, uh, common signs designed. Now, Counselor Capitonic?
I think that's reasonable. Um, it's, you know, not all of them have to be done in a day, so. Start there. They were the community that brought it forward to us and gave us the great idea to try to do it for everybody, but I want to hear, hear. Counselor Minz, we should at least have an Athabasca, welcome to Athabasca County sign at every entrance to our county.
And I, I do remember seeing that.
It is, yeah, yeah. That's kind of silly, silly.
Who, Counselor Wallack?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of keeping the hamlet signage as as thirty thousand, but for. All signage or as many as we can do, thirty thousand dollars for a sign is a lot of money for a hamlet sign. Um, so I think that should be, um, the thirty thousand dollars for the hamlet strategy signage, like. Like, that's not for one sign, like, that can't be for one sign.
C A O?
Ms. Chairman, the, the thirty thousand was suggested by the community group. I think that's why, that's why we just plugged the thirty thousand into the budget, because they wanted to contribute and build it. That's where the, that's where the cost came from.
I under, I understand, but I can't see Thorhild County spending thirty thousand dollars on their, their hamlet signs either, so. There has to be a compromise here.
Counselor Holland?
I'm sorry, but the highway number, and I agree with what you're saying, with the highway number, uh, south of Boyle going to pass Long Lake. Eight thirty one, eight thirty, eight thirty one, that's another one. Um.
That's brand new.
Is that one brand new, or is it, is that the one that's looking? It looks like the old style. That one. Thank you. It's there, but it's old.
So they've got a plan, though, so.
I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned on that plan.
Um. On the hamlet sign piece, I, I'm also kind of more of a fan of having a common. They need to be common across all the hamlets, and so if admin says they can engage third party resources to make that happen and get us a template so they can all look the same. I mean, certainly we should applaud the folks in the community group who've. Kind of let the fire under this issue, but also we can't have, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense to have every, every. Grouping of houses has their own unique design. I mean, when you drive through. Other places like Thorhild or Lacklubish, there's a very, you know, they all have a common uniform look that is. Nice, and, um, and if we're gonna put taxation dollars into it, let's, let's do something that lasts. Um. And, and I guess, sort of, for me, it's. Common brand has to look at the, at the basket county and. You know.
I agree with that. Uh, Grassland did their site hamlet signage through the egg society several years ago. Um, I do have the resource of the name if you guys would like to see what company that was as well.
Okay, so admin is looking for a decision on Wonder River and on, um, potentially a motion for. Out of the twenty twenty four budget, so do. That would look something like direct. Directed men to. Engage?
Yeah, engage, uh, uh. Affirm to, uh, assist with a signage wayfinding. Um, strategy for Athabasca County. And in twenty twenty four budget. So for that, Ms. Chairman, we would just move some money around within, there's going to be excess, so. With that motion, we'll be allowed to move it around.
Okay, is someone willing to do that? Counselor Wallack? Um, so I'm gonna put the motion on the floor, then give you the speaking counsel means, if that's okay. So Counselor Wallack has moved a motion to direct administration to engage a firm to assist with a signage. Wayfinding strategy for Athabasca County from the twenty twenty four budget. Counselor Minz?
So that would be to put a sign in, uh, six six three east end?
No, this is, this is about designing, here's the pattern of what they're gonna look like.
Okay.
For all the hamlets.
For all the.
Stop divisions, whatever we want to do.
As a separate item, Mr. Chairman, we'll bring that confirmation that I believe council was told that there's still money in the twenty four budget for the signage you're asking about.
Okay.
That's actually a separate item.
Okay.
And I thought it was already budgeted.
Do you don't, do you need a motion for it? No?
No, you don't need a motion. They'll, they'll just bring it back.
As long as we're still talking about it.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to direct administration to engage a firm to assist with signage wayfinding strategy for Athabasca County from the twenty twenty four budget. Comments? If you're ready for the question, the question. Counselor Gurlik?
My brain will last a little while to think if I could fi- figure out a bigger waste of money than thirty thousand dollars on a sign that says identifies a hamlet. And just talking to the, to. To the public, I, I just said, the county's contemplating putting in signs. One version is five thousand and one is twelve and a half thousand. What do you think would be? You would be in favor of? And it was a resounding neither. If you got that kind of money to throw around, put it towards something more useful.
So the. So the motion is to come up with a. To engage a firm to assist with a sign wayfinding strategy for the county from the budget, so that, as I understand that, that means they'd come back to us and say. Here's a giant foam core option, here's a metal option, these are the, these are the choices you have to make. Um, and so it's not, the motion is not about building a sign specifically. Is there further comments on the motion? If you're ready for the question on the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Post, count is seven and one, and the motion is adopted. Now, um, Director Wilkinson has asked for a decision relating to the. Wonder River sign. Would it be reasonable from a? Admin, I'm looking for your advice, but to defer. Uh, decision on that item until after the, uh. Results of the most recent motion are in our hands. Because it, it doesn't make sense to say to them, take your money that you've raised, build a sign that in. Six months, we're gonna tell you doesn't look the way we want it to look, and you need to replace.
My understanding was we were going to be paying for that sign and that the money they raised could be used in the community elsewhere.
I don't know that we've made a decision, but. So, but in terms of a decision on the current sign, the answer i- is the right answer, then, folks, to table that till after this one? Okay, Leah, Ms. Blair, do you know what was the motion number for the one we just did?
The previous motion was C C twenty four, four seventy eight.
Okay, so Counselor Minz has moved to table a decision on the hamlet sign for Wonder River until the results of C C twenty four dash four seven eight are in hand. On table emotions? There is no discussion on the question of the adoption of that motion, all is in favor. Post, count of seven and one, the motion's adopted. Um, are there other comments on the capital budgets, si, budget and signs?
Highway. When highway is going two ways, is there a sign on each end of the hamlet? Or do you, do you put in two signs or?
I think that's part of the strategy. Honestly, I don't have a personal opinion, but. Can we leave that for the strategy to come back and tell us what makes sense? Because I, the helmet you're thinking of, there's four roads that run into it. Doesn't need to make, you just say it doesn't need to make sense? Other, okay, we're still on the capital projects. Any further comments, questions, or things you want to bring up with admin? Seeing none, let's flip the page. Councilman, did you have one more?
Are we gonna, is this where we're talking about shoulder pulls?
Well, that's the next page, I think, isn't it? Nope, the next page is, uh. Is the bridge file. Which I don't know if anybody has questions on that quote, and then the shoulder pulls come up on page one oh nine.
Okay.
So let's flip the page, we'll get on to page one oh seven. Admin was asked to bring the bridge, uh, racing. Are there any questions? The rounded estimate is two point one two seven million dollars. Uh, Mr. M Taz?
Mrs. Chair, I'll speak to this. Um, the council, uh, wanted a breakdown of the cost for the Collington Bridge. Uh, please note that this is two years old, this estimate, but, uh, that's why our, uh. Budgeted amount is two point two five million to factor in for increased costs and inflations. But this just gives council, uh, a bit more breakdown of what is going to cost how much, uh, for the Collington Bridge. Uh, also, I would like to note that we've spent about eighty thousand out of this two point two five million. That would be on page one oh eight.
Okay.
So that would be any kind of, uh, preliminary work that we've done, uh, when it comes to decommissioning and design of it.
Okay, further questions, Counselor Holland?
Thank you, um. And my memory might not be accurate here, but I thought we had budgeted, uh, quite a bit more for that, and we just didn't spend it. Is that accurate? Because I think, weren't, weren't we around three hundred for engineering and I thought we were up around six hundred thousand somewhere? Six hundred and some, so I'm just wondering what's happening with those funds. Did that just go into a general account, or is that going against this?
To the chair to Counselor Holland, um, not all of the engineering is done. So I believe it's only partial work that has been complete, uh, that has been completed, but yes, it's not going to be the, uh, the. Whole amount that we, uh, anticipated, so it will be reduced, and, uh, at the end of the day, if, uh, we end up spending one point seven five million. Instead of two point two five, um, yeah. Goes to unrestricted reserves.
Yeah, it just goes into general.
We, we budgeted money in twenty twenty four, and some of the work hasn't yet been done, therefore it hasn't yet been spent. More questions on that bridge? Seeing no hands, let's move on to page one oh nine, Councilman Minz. Um. After your comments at the last meeting, I see that administration has, uh, made some amendments to, uh, do approximately one point five miles in each county division.
Perfect, yes, I want to thank you for that, for, uh, moving the shoulder pulls around and everything. Um, couple of questions I have on it, uh. Uh, the ones in division one, there's a, uh. And it's just got, just for the numbers, like the one up on, uh, Lee Heights Road. That's actually in division four. That's, uh, that road is, is put into, is maintained by division four, and then. So that only gives, uh. Division one. In a way, one mile. Gives division four three miles, so, so just to, just to confirm that and then.
All the division lines run on the north side of the road.
What's that?
It could be that the division lines are running on the, the north side of the road, so that's therefore still in division.
Yeah, exactly. That's, that's, but that's done by.
I mean, it doesn't matter who grades it, we're talking about where the division lines.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I just wanted to bring that to the attention and, and, uh. My one thing is to ask is can shoulder pulls? Can these shoulder pulls be moved? They're, they're, they're destined for these spots, but can they be moved around? Um, let's say an operator wants to do a mile of road some other place. Or is this wrote in stone?
Ms. Chairman, until we started, they're not written in stone.
Okay. Okay. That's the only thing I want to make sure. Thank you.
Counselor Gurlik?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Thank you for looking out for division one, uh, but the fact of the matter is, division one was recipient of a significant amount of shoulder pull this year. So. Yeah. We're not complaining.
No, that, that makes any sense just to split hairs when the road is on the boundary between two divisions, but that is one that I, that I missed when I read this. So my question is, who's paying for that one? Because again, that road is. In my opinion, been severely harmed by the oil field traffic that's been using it. And so I don't understand why county rate payers are paying to fix a road that's been destroyed by industry. Or sorry, it's been damaged by industry. Uh, this is a question for admin, Counselor Holland, I'm gonna give it to them first.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll try to pull it up on my phone while we're talking. I asked, uh, our G I S person to compare the proposed shoulder pulls with. Our road use, and, um, she identified only one that conflicted overlap, so out of all of them, she only found one that might have an overlap. We're happy to pursue that, um, a little bit more before we finalize this, and you're absolutely right, if we've got, uh. Road use agreement and someone else has pounded out the road, the taxpayer should not be fixing it.
Other questions, Counselor Holland?
Thank you, and I appreciate you bringing up road use agreements. It was on my list as well, um, and maintaining those, um, and making sure that those are being, um, enforced. It, I just have one thing that popped into my brain when we were talking about hamlets, and it's some derelict buildings that are basically abandoned. Is there anything in the budget? For demoing? Some of these.
So we're on, can, let's, let's add that to a, like, that's wildly off the topic we're on. Can we just park that till we get to the end?
Yep.
And before we move on from three point. Three. Can you, um, I'll make a sticky note? We'll come back. Is there questions about the road, uh, shoulder pulls? Everybody's happy? I think, I mean, it seems to me, Councilman's following up on your comments from last time. When we spread this work out, if the mobilization isn't that expensive, it allows people across the county, the region to see that there is work happening in their neighborhood and. Okay, we've already discussed the water aid stuff earlier. Well, look at that, Counselor Holland. I've got a sticky note here that says, uh, you wanted to bring up demolition of garbage buildings and hamlets.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just curious, being that there are some that, um, you know, have been there for very many years, they're eyesores, um, they're creating. A lot of attention for undesirable attention for tearing them apart and vandalism and all the rest of that kind of hullabaloo, not to mention what it looks like in our hamlets, and if we're trying to. In our hamlets and if we're trying to attract people to our hamlets, I'm hoping that there is money in the budget to clean some of that up.
Um, I guess to collateral to that, to, are we allowed to clean up somebody else's garbage buildings on the property, but.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I mean, we can certainly. If it's a property that we own free and clear and it's a county property, we should probably budget for some of that cleanup. If it's a county property that's been taken through tax recovery, we can actually add those costs back on the tax roll of the property, so you don't. Necessarily need to budget for it, because you should get it back through the proceeds of the sale. And lastly, if you're forcing someone else through a cleanup order under the M G A uh to do it. Um, and uh they are not complying, you're allowed to put that. Cost on the tax roll of the property also, so. There's a reason we don't necessarily have an envelope of money for that, but we certainly could, we'd probably just. Park it in administration somewhere, um. But a lot of these are those two categories where it's someone else and they actually have to. They should be doing the cleanup, we would do it if they don't comply and add it to the tax for the property.
Thank you, just as a quick follow-up, um, we do own some of those properties, uh, for example, in Collington, there's a couple of uh properties owned by the county that. Look like they can, you know, so that's what I was curious if we, if there is an amount that we could add to the budget.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so those ones we own and they're, but they're tax recovery, so. We would spend the money, but it would go on the tax roll of the property and we would recover that money. When the land is sold, therefore, a lot of, a lot of times you don't budget for that, whatever the cost is, you recover. So that's the distinction, if we had a separate property that was not tax recovery, it was just the county, so the county had a public works building in one of the. One of the hamlets and we're not selling it, we're not doing anything, we just want to clean it up, we absolutely need a budget for it, because there's no. Chance of recovery of that money, so, but we can absolutely include a pocket of money to address that.
So administrative costs for doing those types of things, you know, organizing the, you know, talking with the people who need to do the cleanup. Or for that matter, um, you know, just, I'm just trying to make sure that we, we are focused on it and that we do have some.
That is addressed by the Municipal Government Act, it allows us to take, I believe, a five percent admin fee when we sell a tax recovery property. It's all laid out by the M G A.
Um, Mr. M Taz, I had promised you uh the floor when we got to the end of item. Yes. Three point three, in case there's any follow-up you wanted to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, I just wanted to take us back to airport budget, page seventy five, uh. Wanted the council to note that we missed increasing uh snow plowing and ice removal maintenance by twelve thousand. So next time you will see it increase to total of thirty five thousand from twenty three thousand. Uh, to factor in fertilization, uh fertilizer for deicing runaway. So, uh.
That's under uh point twenty six.
Twenty nine sixty, yeah, page seventy five, under point twenty nine sixty. But that, that was the only main thing left. Thank you.
It's, I know it's, you know, it's obviously a big process and getting all the little bits together, was that just the, the only one?
That's correct.
Thank you. So administration has been given uh the mind of council through the discussion today, we've tested. Ideas for change and I think you've got. Clear direction, more or less, C I O?
Yes, we do, Ms. Chair.
Uh, it would be appropriate to uh seek a motion to receive this for information. Counsel Wallack, Counsel Wallack has moved that uh. That the council accepts twenty twenty five operating count and capital budget follow-up report is information, is there any further discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all is in favor. Opposed, the count is eight and zero and the motion is adopted. Uh, for the administrative team, want to thank you guys for being in here, it's, I know it's kind of a burning up of your day, but it's also important for us when you're able to answer the. Questions directly and and get uh specific information, so I appreciate you spending the time with us. Um, we are at item number three point four, transitional housing project. Counsel Anderson, do you want to speak to this or make a motion?
I'd recommend a motion.
Counsel Anderson, we would like to make a motion to direct administration to report to the November fourteenth special county council meeting. Outlining whether the conditions set by council resolution. Twenty three, seven, twelve have been met and what funding may be required for this project in twenty twenty five. So any discussion on that? Counsel Holland?
So just so, um, I'm understanding all of this is going to be coming back, all of the uh. Conditions, thank you, will be reviewed of what is owing to us as far as reporting is concerned, et cetera, et cetera. Is that everything or just certain items in the, in the agreement?
I don't understand the question.
Well, there's certain, um, certain areas in the agreement that they were asked for reporting on quarterly, there's other things that are mentioning in the agreement that, um.
Okay, this is the resolution is written right up above on the package.
Yep.
To, um. And so it's to uh to get the reporting that's required is how I understand that, but uh.
Just, I just want to make sure that all conditions are being coming back that um are supposed to be met, that we will be discussing in that agreement.
Other questions, comments? Question the adoption of that motion, or sorry, do I, sorry. Do you want to, uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Counsel Anderson, the final word and then I'll call a question.
Thank you. Um, I think council sets some really specific conditions in this motion and as part of this project. And I think prior to passing our next budget, um, we deserve the opportunity to assess. The you, the uh use of this asset and I think part of that is. Seeing those quarterly financial statements. But also the proposed annual budget for the next year, prior to us passing our budget. Just think, um, for transparency purposes, our council deserves to see that. And so I wanted to make sure that that didn't just fall off the radar.
On the question of the adoption of the motion to direct administration to report to the November fourteenth special county council meeting. Outlining whether the conditions set by council resolution twenty three, seven, twelve have been met and what funding may be required for this project in the twenty twenty five budget. All those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero, that motion is adopted. It would be in order to receive a motion to enter closed session. Counsel Minz has moved to counsel, counsel, enter a closed session discussion on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. Opposed, uh, count is eight and zero. And the motion is adopted. I, we are going to reconvene. Uh, we left closed session, Counsel Gerlick made a motion to exit closed session, the count was eight and zero and that motion was adopted. Counsel Capitonic, are you ready to? Come back? Uh, counselor regarding item number. Five point one, Counsel Wallack. Has made a motion to direct administration to book a meeting with the North Central Region Staff from Transportation Economic Corridors. On November fourth, twenty twenty four, is there any further discussion on that item? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is eight and zero and that motion is adopted. Regarding item number five point. Two. Who, Counselor Chamsik. Uh, was going to make a motion to accept, to receive that item for information, that update, sorry, to receive the update for information. Is that correct? On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero and that motion is adopted. Counsel Holland uh indicated that you would like to make a motion to invite the M L A's that serve our county. To a county council meeting at their convenience. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and zero and that motion is adopted. Regarding item five point three. Uh, Counselor Holland, you would like to make a motion to rescind motion C C twenty four dash four seven zero. And to receive this item for information. Is there any discussion on that item? On the question of the adoption of that item, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion is adopted. So this concludes the business of our meeting today, except for one comment, which um I wanted to make, which is a reminder. For all of us. That it's a privilege, in my opinion, for us to serve at this table and it's a privilege that. Must be earned and I think we've all earned that, but once earned, there's an obligation for us to do something good with that opportunity. As members of council. We're here to make change and to leave our organization better than before. And to work with our conviction to make this region better, not just for some, but for all. And so thinking about that, I think we should not be settling for mediocrity, but strive for excellence. Our lives and our time is too short and there's too much to be done to squander our time on trivial matters. So I'm convinced that we have more in common than the things that separate us, it's time that we need to fo- focus on matters, not on the things that divide us, but on our common interests. Our time remaining here is short, we're in the last twelve months. And the choice that each of us has to make is how we choose to spend it and what positive outcomes we can achieve before the end of the term. So our next meeting is the org meeting and the next choice we need to make is who will sit as Reeve for the final year. While it's been a privilege for me to serve in this capacity, today is the final meeting, I'll chair as Reeve, we will need to elect someone different on October thirty first. Thank you for your participation in the meeting today and we are adjourned.